Today is Thursday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, and the time is?
Seven sixteen.
Seven sixteen P M. Important notice, due to COVID-nineteen social distancing regulations and consideration of the health of the New York City District Ward residents, and based upon the executive order issued by Governor Jay Preperster of State of Illinois, to promote the fullest public participation, the meeting will have both a fiscal and virtual component, and to join the meeting virtually, see the information below. In the event the Zoom link does not work, a quorum of the corporate authorities will be in person at the village hall. Please note that public comment will be allowed at the meeting, and the public will be invited to make any comments as provided for in the agenda. Until public comment is called, all persons who are not members of the Board of Trustees should mute themselves until the public comment portion of the meeting. So as to allow the Board of Trustees to conduct the business of the village, person wishing to submit electronic public comments should email said comments to clerk Juanita Darden at clerk@thewillagedixmore.org no later than one hour before the start of the meeting. Next on the agenda is roll call trustee Angela Frank Mills.
Present.
Trustee Tito Webster.
Here.
Trustee Dewayne Tyson.
Here.
Trustee Janina Smith.
Here.
Trustee Tony Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Charlie McFadden.
Here.
Also present is the village president.
Here.
Mr. Robert, Village Clerk Juanita Darden, John Thompson, economic development, and his assistant, Charles Chucky Collins, superintendent of public works, Hubert Darden, police chief, Lee Lo, director of TIF, and code of enforcement, Twee Mills, code of enforcement, John, I mean, Charles Johnson, H R slash treasurer, Anthony McCastle, yours truly, corporation counsel, James Maselli.
Two R residents, you see.
We have one of our baby residents, Parker, we have Mr. and Mrs. Tyson, we have Key Money, Luvino. Next on the agenda is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mail will be leaving us in a moment aside if you let me.
Would anyone like to say a prayer tonight, please? It's nice and quiet in silence. Lord Jesus, here once more come to say thank you, first of all, I thank you for watching over us, Lord. Thank you for leading us in the right direction, Lord, continue to keep your arms around us, continue to let us love on one another and others, Lord Jesus. Continue to let us lead this town into the right direction, continue to take care of our families, continue to help everyone in my name of Jesus, amen.
Mary, next on the agenda is the department manager Thomas Curry.
Get started, so. Y'all get too many of them. I got too much to say. I'm gonna start off with Mr. John Thompson, and I'm gonna just serve.
Very quickly, this, we had a meeting with S S N A, Christie D. Laventis, and she gave us some information on what our status is with our capital funds, and we actually have as of two thousand and twenty-one, we have two million one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars with the state of Illinois in our capital fund. There are other grants that are available that she informed us of, that are our key grant, and we're going to talk to S S N A when we get started, we're trying to get started with our funds. If we don't extend these funds or spend these funds, as we always say, you lose the funds, you allocate it somewhere else, so we need to be on board with spending these funds, spending them in the right direction. Just to give you an update, community center is allocated two hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Roadway, a hundred and fifty thousand, we've lost thirty-eight thousand dollars to that grant because we haven't made it, put it into these, we haven't started the contracts yet, so we have to get these things spent. Local infrastructure improvements, we have fifty thousand dollars there, and we have still have the fifty thousand available. And capital improvement project, we have a hundred thousand dollars and one point five million dollars that we have to allocate, and it means to do our construction order to the grants that we have available. So, and then we have water mains, which we have two hundred thousand dollars, and these are all in capital to improve. This is the C D B G or county grants, this is just the state grants, and our state rep is informing us that we should sit down and update our wish lists. It's kind of like mandatory, so each department should update their wish lists, their needs, give a need assessment from the police department, we don't have the fire department, but we do have public works that are, we have a great need, we have road improvements we still need, we have water mains. The water grant that we have replaces lead lines from the homes to the water line, not replace the water line. So we still have a lot of issues with valves, hydrants, things that are running, and we're finding them at all times where we need to be asking the state to help us with these grants. So these are things that we will be applying for, it won't happen overnight, but we're gonna be on and working on these consistently. I'll be back to tell you about some other things I'll introduce, but that's my report for today.
And again, the board and the department heads, that is a wish list, not, no, I'm gonna put it down, I'm gonna get it, it's a wish list. I think you know you got enough of your wish, you know, with. Next, I'd like to have, what, you, Mr. Chuckie, have anything to say?
No, sir, nothing in particular except that I did speak with the attorney, that he gave, he did pass off the list. We have maybe sixty pieces of Dixmore property that we are trying to get cleared up, and we are starting to put together these footprints for these findings that the board has decided they want to do. So we are moving very quickly, and we also have tracked down maybe, maybe tracked down maybe thirty other pieces of properties with the attorney, and we're trying to cross reference from the recorder of these different information that we have, our own data. And what we can find out, we have more property available to the village than we actually are aware of. So we're working very quickly to try to bring all that together, so that we can allow the board to put together some concepts or something, so we can attract some new developments. So we're moving very fast.
Really, so we can build it, build it.
And I do have a list from science that you provided for you guys, but we did create a memo with all the pin numbers and addresses, collect paper on the back taxes. So I will try to get that to you and put them in your mailbox, so you can all have that for your personal records.
With that said, I don't know if that would be wise, because you may have individual files and stuff, so we don't leave the numbers and all of that stuff on there, so.
That's fine.
I'm standing with you, brother.
That's fine.
If we get our pin numbers, we'll get them from downtown online. They keep us in the clear where they ain't saying that the trustees did access to come and get them from the village, so we even, what we find.
Yes, sir, and we're also trying to prepare a judicial deed list for a variety of homes that need to be condemned, so that the city can begin to put limbs on them and to acquire these properties, whether you want to demolish them, do some type of program, or we have to gather the proper data, so we can begin the condemnation process. Or we can go after them just to do whatever we please to do with. So I should have a list of at least twenty or thirty properties that qualify for condemnation, and we're gonna try to get the attorney, Attorney Stack, I believe his name is Eric Stack.
Stack, S T A, yeah, he's one of my law partners, he's a great lawyer.
He's very knowledgeable, very knowledgeable. Then he responded quickly with a multitude of information, so thank you so much for putting it together with us. So I will, I will carry on with that, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, trustee.
Now, can we get a list of, I just wanna see the list of properties that you're listing that will be condemned on.
Yes, ma'am, because in order that they can do, it must be approved by you all here, so that will be something that'll come before you all, and that'll be in conjunction with Mr. Tully and Charles comes in. We'll have pictures and all of these things, because some of them you may not like, and then we just wanna acquire them for whatever purpose, we wanna redevelop them or whatever, but we will have a list with documentation to present to the board before there's any movement on that. And one last thing, ma'am, we also will talk to the trustee, we want to try to get a list on public works, we're gonna try to solve some of these issues with meters, we want to try to get a list of who has these wireless meters and which homes do not. We're gonna start doing some types of analysis to help public works figure out what's going on with some of this water stuff. So hopefully we will have a list of who's wireless and areas we use on, we're gonna take a look at the actual material that's being used, and try to figure out why there's no software or something that allows the public works to download this data directly to a computer, so we don't have to deal with human error. But no matter what we do, I mean, where there's paper involved and a human, there's always an error, so if they scanning something, it needs to be scanned into some form of digitized database or something, so that you and the board will be able to go and punch that in. There's no messing with it outside.
Just kind of, here you go, company, I believe, they say these mass waterworks, and I write those, so. The waterworks do have a system where they can actually go through, well, we gotta, again, we gotta have all our houses with the tuchery and scan, where they can go through, actually pick it up, and then all you do is sit it on base, and it all goes into the system.
Yes, sir, we need to get control, we need to get control of our mobile home, it's out of power, it's very, I, I roll through there, it's dangerous, they have empty holes with water running, we have to get control. And the village, it's in the village, even though there may be southern water, they have to inform us of what they're doing, so that we can put it on the map, so we can chart it. If it's not on our maps, we don't know what services are being performed.
If it's not on the map, it's considered, if it's not on the map, and you don't have no records in the village, all of them doing it is considered illegal, regardless, if you tap into the village pipe, it's illegal, I don't care who gets it. Superintendent. I'm working with you now.
I remember that, what, Charles Johnson, they had brought us, and Twee Mills had brought us something that they were asking for, and my reading was, it dealt with public works and water or something, so I really don't know much about that. Other than they brought us something that they want us to purchase, and if you could talk to Mr. Johnson and see, cause in that, whatever, what I read, it had something to do with meters and, I just would like for you all to talk, cause I don't want to approve what they're asking for in the conflict, I mean, and we.
Trustee, what they have is, is what they usually refer to as municipal software.
Okay.
It has to do with when they write tickets or they cite someone, it's digitally tracked, so they're not running around with paper and the carbon copies.
Right.
So if they cite someone with their tablet, the ticket will go in there with the image that they taken, it's automatically recorded for a reporter's permit. What we're talking about is tracking the actual, the actual stuff that the city already has, because they're saying there isn't any software.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure we don't just double up on, alright, thank you, thanks.
You're welcome, sir.
I wanna touch on that meter thing, for the last ten years, we've been changing the meters over, for that touch read, right, or the quick read, so that we can, you know, probably get a vehicle or whatever, and just drive through and get the read, and then it comes straight into the, to the office. So it eliminates people writing it up, you know what I mean? So we, we have been changing those meters, the last time I was here, and also we picked it up again now, we're changing them out, whenever we can get to them, we change them out. So whenever John Thompson, these guys get that grant up for those meters, we'll be ready, so we on it right now.
And the meters that's in here.
And that wasn't in my report, but probably you guys talked about it, we're on it.
And the meters, just to let you all know, the meters that's being put in the house now, all they have to do is just go back and add an antenna on.
That's it.
That's it. Cause I would like, we'd like to bring the bill, we have code, like, come in, you don't pay your bill, have staff hit the right, it's all.
We're about three hundred, about three hundred to go. Okay, so that's, that's only like six hundred or seven hundred meters in a time, so I think we got about three hundred in now, but I'm gonna check on that and get the right count of how many we got put in the last ten years. So we got about, I think about four hundred to go. Oh, and also today we kept off some water over on one hundred and forty-fourth and Page, that's been running for probably five or six years. Also, we cleared the corner that was blocked out, and we repaired one of our tractors that was gonna cost us eight thousand dollars, we got it up and running, okay, so that's saving. Also, I wanted to ask the board about a pickup, these people is putting out stuff every day, every day they putting out couches, you know, household stuff, but it's kind of, I think it's costing the village a lot of money. Because you paying the garbage people also for paying the dumpster, so is these the same people that we're paying?
Yes, sir.
So somebody is not doing their job, it's not us, okay, because every week, I have a day that I send the guys out, and all they do is go through town and pick up debris, okay? And then we picks it up and we go to the dump and dump it, we getting double charged too, we paying for, for garbage pickup, also we paying for dumping. You see what I'm, you guys with me on this?
Yeah.
So they, they beating us down with that. I mean, I don't mind doing the job, but it seem like we get took. So I was, I was wondering, could we do a letter to the residents?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
But they, they could do it, put out stuff, then we can kind of keep up with it.
Can we tell them it's only a certain amount we can put out there?
Exactly, and also we need to clean, do a cleanup.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, that's it, thirty-first.
We, we gonna be talking about that a little bit.
Yeah.
What I, what I wanted to say is that I had, thank me, I had just spoken to the clerk, cause I wanted to get the contract, cause we have a contract with L I, and there was something in there when I was on the board before, I don't know what they did, you know, within those four years, which I'm sure nothing. But I wanted to see that contract, because they did commit themselves to some things, such as some cleanup, they, they supposed to do some things.
Well, when you look over that contract, could you let me in on that?
Oh, of course.
See what we can do.
What we are doing to set up a meeting with the.
L I.
L I, then we all would like to show up at the meeting fifty or ahead of time, this way if it's more, we'd be a quorum, we'd get posted.
Right, okay.
But.
But I need to know that.
I will contact him and get him in contact that you know, so that I can.
Gotta save a lot of time in my department.
But I, I just want to look at that contract first, so we'll know when we going, I mean, you know, when we meet with him, we'll have questions, but clerk is, she's looking into that now, cause I need to see that contract, cause they did make some commitments to this village.
And also I wanna, I wanna say before, before we make up, why, we're, we're attacking this water thing every day, me, John Thompson, my department, every day, we're on it, so we bringing it down, but we haven't kept it down, okay? But every day you're gonna see them digging somewhere, at night you're gonna see a market for us to dig the next day, okay? And my guy is doing a perfect job.
You doing that, sir?
Our chief here is doing a good job, he came by and shared, shared his lunch with me today. Over the twenty-five years, I've been here, that ain't never happened. He's surprising.
Well, I'm making sure it don't happen again. So.
So that, that's my report, okay?
Okay, okay, we're going to speed it up a little bit, guys, because we have vendors out in the, knock that, come in, but the ones who are.
Uh, hold on.
Go with the trustee, trustee.
No, I just wanted to say that I have been talking with superintendent as well as John Thompson about the water situation and the clerk, so we actually have a meeting scheduled for August the fourth at ten A M., correct clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
And hopefully we'll have some data and questions, so we can get some answers as to how we want to attack the water situation, and get all of our, well, we know we don't follow meetings that are, we're working with that, but just to see how we can streamline everything at this point, so, if there's ever available, I guess, you welcome to attend.
So we're posting a case if you would like to.
Yeah, posting. And then start, right, right now they still installing meters and water main rigs, and we even have some of the young pump and work guys going out and starting meters, I was shopping, I saw that, they're doing a good job, so.
That's all we gotta do, that's it.
I bring it on to the, to the chief now, chief, please keep it a little short, brother.
It's gonna be short, chief, mayor, like I said, good afternoon or good evening to you.
Good afternoons, chief.
President and board and how people are, you know, like, good to you. I got a little short report, but we know it's short, but it's good, you know, this, this, this last, past since the last board meeting, we had to develop twenty-five calls for service, we issued forty-eight wire tickets, which goes over to Mark, we had forty P tickets, citation, we had level arrest, and we had five administrative tow, a five hundred dollar tow, which I think was all those that have been connected. And the other thing that we've been having going on is that recently here, we just went to the county, we received that, that C D along with all the, I guess, the printout of all the evidence that was in the, in the evidence room, so now evidence room is back up and running, we destroy evidence, everything was accounted for from the, from the, you know, from what, you know, was on the ditch, from the Cook County, from Cook County, you know, sheriff office. Since we last spoke, our sales have been painted, they really look nice, so, you know, I appreciate it, if you all just come by and just take a look at it, I mean, I'm not asking y'all to visit, you know, take a look at it, you know? And also, in the last day or so, we, I think we saved the building a little bit of money by getting the county out of your hand, they went into that new system, maybe the mayor might wanna elaborate on that, looking for it and, you know, okay, well, they, they saved the buildings, I think, between eight hundred and nine hundred dollars. We don't have to pay for our communication system to, to the county anymore, it's free for us now, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars or a hundred dollars spent before, now you don't have to spend a dime for it. Our leads, are we, are we awake, like, it's a password, and we're waiting for leads to send the password, and then we're back in full operation over there on this block, so that's the end of my.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll let John, Paul. Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor. Residents, how y'all doing today, we have a fire. The building department right now, we're still kind of, you know, waiting on, hopefully getting these tablets in soon, so we, you know, really get busy, everybody can see what we're doing out there, that's our biggest, that's our biggest thing we would like to have in our building department, that's. Yeah, so our biggest, our biggest concern right now is getting the tablets in our department, so we can start really documenting everything that's done in town, as opposed to just writing everything down, right now we're just kind of shuffling papers, and all the paperwork we have is old in the building department, it's really outdated, and so we're kind of struggling in the building department right now to do things as effective as it can be done in town, so hopefully we can get these tablets rolling and get, and get this thing off the ground real well. So, so far to date, so far to date, we've issued, this, this past month, we've issued, we've taken in roughly about two thousand sixty dollars in permits, in permit fees, we've taken in roughly about two thousand dollars even, in just tickets and fines, two thousand dollars even in tickets and fines. That's not a whole lot of money, but it's a start. The problem in this town is getting people to recognize that we are doing co-enforcement right now, and that they have to understand that they will be coming, that we will be coming, you know, and once we get our tablet up and running, we're gonna be even more efficient, you'll be able to see everything that we're doing out in this town, everything that we're doing. Right now, I guess our biggest concern is really the tablets and vehicles, because I'm still using my, I'm still using my personal vehicle, Twee's using this personal vehicle to take care of our business, so at least one vehicle for our department is needed. Other than that, that is it, unless anybody has any questions about anything?
Well, I'd just like to add, I talked with the treasurer today, and he said your tablets should be coming next week.
So when are we?
Well, the apple was backed up, but they are.
So with the tablets, will we be getting the program that we need to operate the system with?
Program, I mean.
The program we presented to you.
No, I don't, I said program coming.
Oh, program, okay. Because you just have a tablet.
But I know, I know you need the program to work.
As well, this man, that, that program would be very helpful, that way you'll be able to see in real time everything that's happening in the building department, from tickets to citation, anything, you'll be able to see anything that we're doing out in the streets, it really would be helpful. Another thing I'd like to mention is the building that's, the, the glass building, the glass residential house was on Cooper Street, I can't find any information on when that permit was issued, the permit that's currently hanging on that lamppost outside the house there is so faded, I don't know when the permit was issued, I can barely see when it was issued, but I definitely can't see when it expires. There's been no activity on that property for, for quite some time now. Also, before we issue another permit, I, I really think we need to get a better set of drawings, because even when I talked to the plumber, he had a difficult time understanding what, how to place the plumbing system in the, in the house, because there's just no information on the drawings at all, and we're gonna run into a problem if we let them continue on this project, because that's a glass, that's pretty much a glass building. We have no load bearing on anything, no load bearing information on the drawings, no anything on the drawings that tells us what's gonna support the load of all this glass on the two-story building, with, with the, with the HVAC and all that stuff on the roof. Important information to have, and we've never heard back from the information that the mayor hadn't asked them to provide for us, what was it, I think it was, you wanted them to provide, provide for us the letter from their attorney.
That letter was emailed to, to our attorney, it was emailed, it was emailed, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, we had had a meeting with the individuals, and told them to email to our attorney, we need to email where our attorney can check. We need to email where our attorney can check.
Okay. I'll double check my emails, Mr. Mayor, I'll go through forward, but I didn't, I don't recall seeing anything. But I'll double check, you know? All right? There are a lot of emails I would like, but I'll double check.
Okay. Trustee, trust.
Well, going back to the house on Cooper, I thought when we were in the meeting that it was discussed that they can move forward. Long as it, long as the...
Bring the waiver.
Yeah, long as the waiver, and it wasn't on the bill.
Right, exactly.
So, I don't know, do we still need to bother certain, you know, people after they already agreed that this doesn't have anything to do with it?
Again, like I said, I haven't seen the letter and we agreed on the letter, but I, we haven't seen them in our department. And so, as far as I'm concerned, the permit, the current permit is expired. So, before we can issue a new permit, we really should have that letter in hand. And that letter should be approved by our village attorney.
So, it's, it's on me, everybody, just so you get some finality out of it. It's on me, I, we have to wait. Uh, let me double check my emails, maybe I got it, it was spam or something like that. But, no, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Um, Mr. Quinlan, Mayor?
Yes, uh, um, trustee Smell?
Uh, will you, you guys, can you meet, like, if you have it?
Of course.
Let, let him know. Um, and you guys said you had a meeting. Um, you, you guys had a meeting in regards to this, this glass house?
There, there was a, there was a meeting, uh, uh, where the gentleman was having certain issues because he was already given a permit to do the work. So, for the builders to go back and say, oh, no, you can't do this, you can't move forward, you can't do this. But they had, they was already giving them a permit. So, it was a meeting in here and a meeting where this follows where they give the attorney, they're gonna send the attorney the waiver and they can move forward. Since then, they have leveled the ground. Mr. Donovan here went over also to, uh, make sure that the plumbing and the piping was the way it was supposed to be. And he said it was okay. Then, from what I understand, Mr. Johnson had, uh...
Had a plumbing inspector come over and check the plumbing.
Plumbing inspector to come in and say it was okay. So, they polled the foundation. After you polled the foundation, you gotta give a house at least pretty much almost a month, you know, before you start building on it. So, I guess that's what they're doing. Foundation was polled about, what, three weeks ago? So, I mean, I guess that's what they...
About a month, that was about a month. It's been about a month since the foundation was pulled, sir.
Okay, well, it's been about a month that the foundation been polled, which make it even better if you don't have nothing built on top of it. If it was polled about a month ago, it's even better. So, what we'll do, we'll check, you know, see if the attorney, you see the letter...
Attorney letter, something like that.
Waiver letter, whatever it may be, and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you.
Uh, hey, go ahead, treasurer. How you doing, uh? Yeah, about treasurer?
Good.
Anthony McCaslin.
Good evening, uh, president, trustees, residents, party heads. Uh, real quick, I have a simple report. Um, from the ADR, our point of view, we have about forty-one employees. Um, as of right now, our tax collections is about forty-six percent, which is not good. Uh, so, all the money we collect from Cook County as of now, it's, uh, forty, forty-six percent of what previous, um, tax levies have been. Uh, my total bank account, uh, at the Fifth Third Bank is six hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, just real quick, uh, Mr. Charles, um, T-Mobile said that the iPad should be here roughly Wednesday or Thursday. The problem is, it's a backup with, uh, some chip, well, I know for a fact with chip issue. That's the same chip that runs Ford Motor Company and G.M. and everybody else. So, it's a backlog on that. So, they said hopefully Wednesday or Thursday, um, soon as they come out, give you guys a call. Um, and real quick, and to the credit of the, uh, public works, what they are saying is accurate because based on, so, when we started collecting money back in May, roughly, let's say, June first, we were losing about seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, we're gonna lose thirty-three thousand. That's based, I base that on strictly on bank deposits. So, we are stopping the leak. Um, and when I say we're losing, just give you hypothetical speak, but I'll get into it detailed. We spending so much money with the city Harvey, and by the time we get all of our money collected from the residents and the businesses, we're still short about thirty-three thousand. It was seventy-six thousand, so I almost cut that in half. So, that's, uh, that's pretty, pretty awesome. Um, other than that, um, mayor trustees, department heads, residents, that's all I have. Yes.
Give, give us that bank statement.
Six, um, six hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-one point two four.
Uh, uh, Mayor, I just wanted to ask, uh, treasurer.
Yes.
Now, I hear the police department, they are saying that they collected these P tickets money. I guess it's the P ticket money. Okay, and also, um, Mr. Johnson was saying that they, they had two thousand sixty thousand permits and two thousand dollars in fines. Do we have that money? I mean, where's the...
I have not got a report on it yet. So, when, when the money comes in through the collector's department, it's deposited. What I can do is ask for a report and to see the separation. I'm just speaking, I'm just speaking solely on the money that actually kind of come forward, and that's the water department money. And that's based on, because this is a total separate account. So, those funds are going into the general account, which I don't think they should be. I think they should be going separate. Um, and that's something that you guys can, um...
We'll be discussing that in the finance committee meeting. Uh, me and, uh, trustee Muse have already talked about that. So, when we have our next finance meeting, because I wanna see what each department is collecting. Okay, so, we will have to find out how we separate them. Yeah, but I just heard the, the totals today and I'm trying to see where is all this money? So, that's...
Well, that's, that's a collective of all the accounts, um, that's...
No, I was talking about from the department heads, that, that's what I...
Yeah, I, I always suggest that we put everything separate so that we can have a better community system.
Yeah, that's what we are here to do. You said forty-six percent taxes, only forty-six percent of the taxes has been collected out of a hundred percent?
Yes. So, we're about fifty-four percent down.
So, we need to discuss how we go about...
Well, I think, I think the first thing we, we identify is how much property that the village actually owns.
Oh, that's...
And try to get that money back on the tax road. And then, for those banks that might not be paying their money for these abandoned homes, if they still own them, we can wipe them so they can start paying.
And that's what you all are working on? All right, well, thank you.
Mr. McCaslin, how you doing with the overtime for the police department? Is it the same?
Um, last, last pay period, there was only three, three people, um, that had, uh, collected overtime. It's, uh, getting better, um, but it's still there. So, we'll see how that goes, uh, this next pay period.
I would like to add one thing, if I may. Um, we, like I said, we went through the evidence room, and we do have, uh, funds that can be used through the police department once you guys approve us, uh, account, you know? So, I spoke with the mayor about it, but the faster, the better, because, you know, money burning hole in your pockets, so. It's been sitting over there a long time, you know? We had something that was in the safe, that's been in the safe for eight years.
Month?
Yeah.
Month? It's just in there?
That's right. Yeah, but it's, it's, we seized the money, yeah, yeah.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, boy, hold on. That's four-fitch of money. Money that was seized.
Okay.
So, it's a certain process that have to go through. And once it go through the process, we'd like to set up an account. But these funds will go over in the police fund account or something like that to help pay for their equipment.
Oh, that's what you're saying.
Cars and so forth, stuff like that, that's what that money is used for. It's not used for general funds because we did have that issue and it's being looked at now where they took four-fitch of money and used it the wrong way. This money is for the police department, police equipment, such as cars, guns, or whatever the police need over there in the department. It's not to go into general funds. Just to let, let us know. But I'm still happy because guess what? Still, us buying the stuff for the police department, cars and stuff, guess what? They can buy their own, so.
Can I borrow some money from you?
Me too.
Huh?
Me too.
Only if you wanna speak with the state, so turn me have a mo. I'm not gonna stop asking.
I mean, I seen the trustee's eyes a little when I said that, but I didn't mean to open them, I can't...
But then I got told when I said talk to the state.
Yeah, I'm staying now.
Yeah, yeah, but that's four-fitch money. So, anyway, uh, we got our department.
I have a question off the treasure, uh, ma'am, please. Do you have a, a date or how, we're looking with our audience or...
No, I do not. So, I'm waiting on Gonzalez to get back to me, uh, Dave Gonzalez to get back with me. I haven't heard from you after holiday. So, as soon as he get back, we'll be getting on top of it.
All right, because we, uh, you know...
Yep.
Yeah, we got her, we're gonna get on it because, uh, I think we, uh, I know, I know we behind on it, but also somebody need to reach out. Clear, reach out.
I'll call her.
Please.
Yes.
What time you gonna be in? I'm gonna be rich.
Uh, well, eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, town bill. So, we really, we're talking that, we're...
What about appropriations? How, how, how...
So, appropriations, um, they okay? Um, I, like I explained before, um, I wasn't here, but I did it on the, uh, on the phone. So, when we're looking at our, our appropriation budget, that's one part of it. But then we gotta actually look at the actual working budget. And so, once we get past that and go to the party and ask a meeting with them and find out exactly what the needs are and see what we can afford.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda.
Mayor, that's our citizen comment to the end.
Okay, so, we have citizens coming today. Okay, so, we, it brings us to item seven, approval of the minutes, the board minutes, executive board minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty-one. Looking for a motion.
I'm going, a second.
Who's meeting by trustee Troy Webster, second by Angela Frank Mills. Roll call clerk.
Trustee Frank Mills?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Zia?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McCaslin?
Yes.
Motion carried, bye.
Okay, now, we have discussion slash approval of the bill, bills and invoices.
Uh, uh, we can, um, we can take that off because, uh, treasurer said we do not have any bills this, this, this meeting. And, and if we, if we do have any, and he has not brought it to us, it has not come out, I would come in.
Well, the bills, I'm sorry, the bills that, um, I'm referring to, they were already, it was out of committee for the community center, uh...
Oh, that was the board, oh, yeah, we, we took it. But we, we voted on it, right? So, we did, we did approve that, yes. Yes, we did. We, at the meeting, we took that out. But wasn't that part of the last, uh, uh, bills list, what we discussed in our last meeting?
It was.
It was, was, it was a part of that. I, I don't have the bills list right now, but we voted, whatever we took out of committee, whatever we took out of committee, we voted for it. Did you recall, you said that I didn't get it and I told you it wouldn't happen again?
Okay.
So, it had to be, uh, treasurer, can you check?
So, the, it wasn't actually on the bills list, but it was approved in committee and we gave a cap of like eight thousand dollars. We said, try not to, we said, I tried not to hit that, um, and it would be actually a reimbursement.
It was four thousand?
Sorry, four thousand, it's actually a reimbursement. So, he paid his money and he turned in all the invoices, so.
So, they were sitting there already?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we...
Okay.
So, that was it.
So, this is... Okay.
Oh, uh, Mayor? Mayor?
Go ahead.
Would you allow me to say this real quick? I just thought about, um, McCain is not here. Um, but I did call the fire department, okay? And talked to, what's his name, Chief Bill. And what has not been told to us is that the residents can call the fire station. And I have the number and I didn't bring it with me. And they can get smoke detector, uh, smoke alarms, because that would be a smoke detector. They can get that. Uh, anything that the Harvey offers, the fire department offers to residents, there we are entitled. Uh, at one time, they would bring, they would install it, but he said probably within the next thirty to sixty days, they will be doing that. But of course, we know because of COVID, they were not able to go into the homes only for disabled or senior. They will go to the home. But hopefully, in sixty to thirty, sixty days, that may change. But they do have smoke detectors. You can call there and I will get the number and say, I'm a Dixmoor resident and I would like to get a smoke. I have a question on that. Are they also operating carpet rock? I, I don't know if that's combined.
It could be a combination.
Yeah, I don't know if it's right, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's combined, because some of them are. But I just wanted to let the residents and, uh, the trustees know that, uh, Dixmoor residents are entitled to that.
Thank you. Next, especially petition, Mr. Lee Frantroy, I think he's on the line, he... Oh, can he please come in? He's the guy that wanted to do yoga, let me tell him, he's here.
If the department heads would like to leave at this time due to COVID, you're welcome to leave.
Mr. Frantroy was on the agenda in that last meeting.
Okay, so, uh, excuse me, hey, boy, boy, come on, come on, guys. Okay, I, I, excuse me, thank you. I know you've been, been here for a while, but we're trying to live the time during COVID, but we can move right through. So, we, we give you two, three minutes, that's long enough for you?
That's fine, thank you. I wanna say, uh, mayor, trustees, appreciate the opportunity for our company to be able to speak with you today. If I may, I hand you this information?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you did, okay, I, I, I didn't know. Okay, my name is Lee Frantroy. I am here today, uh, she presents you, I am a certified yoga instructor. And what I would like to do, I've been in the industry for well over about ten years and been teaching and training for a little over about four years now. Uh, what I would like to do is bring to the village of Dixmoor, uh, an opportunity to teach yoga, uh, to the community. Uh, and I would like to do this at no cost to the village. Uh, you know, recently, I am looking at possibly for an area where we could, uh, use the center out here as a place to teach. Uh, it will be one day a week. Uh, we could identify time, just put me in contact in terms of whom I need to speak with. And I will start doing the necessary marketing and of course, working with you as well, the village. And I'm looking at possibly starting a class sometime in October. Uh, so, basically, the type of yoga in which I would provide is hatha, which is a very traditional form of yoga. And what I will focus on is, uh, the three paths associated with yoga, very traditional. Meditation, what they, and also what they call asanas or exercises for as well. Uh, the goal here is to focus on relaxation, to work on lowering blood pressure and also lower anxiety. I've been doing this for a while, it has helped me, and this is something that I would like to bring to the community.
Uh, yes, you said no charge, no cost to the village, but are you looking to have a donation from the participants or...
Yes, that's, yes, if, you know, I probably put something out there that if they want your donation, that's... Yes, there's some, yes, if, you know, I probably put something out there that if they want your donation, that's fine. But it's nothing that I'm looking for.
So you're not, you're not setting a fee or anything at this point?
No, I mean, I can, if they want you at the end of the class, donation is there, fine if you want to do that. And I have, you know, I've done this a few times already. Quite frankly, I, you know, I enjoy it. So, and, and I'll find other means, uh, for finding ways for compensation, but it will be at no cost to the village. Yes, sir.
Backs, do you have a following already? I mean, people that you already, you already involved in?
Sure, that's, that's a good question. So basically I started, oh, maybe about a couple of years ago at, uh, Prairie Library. I, I developed a yoga for men's class there. And I did that for a while. And then after that, I, I started, uh, teaching at, uh, HF racket club as well on Sundays. And so now, you know, when COVID hit, you know, everything sort of just went away. You know, I sort of just let it go. And so now things are starting to open back up again. I want to start developing and extending my practice.
You want to ask?
So I, um, so we just can set the time, you are available in the evening?
Yes, it would have to be, yes, it would have to be in the evening, yeah. And, uh, the way I was looking at it is possibly, if you could put me in contact, I don't know if it would be, you know, someone from the center or not, but it'll be you. Okay, thank you, sir. What I would do, I'm looking at probably about a six thirty, if that would work.
Right now, just saying, yeah. Do you know any at your, uh, location that's doing, do you pay a fee or rent out the facility?
No, you know, I, again, I'm starting back up again.
Okay.
All right, so, no. Uh, at this point in time, I have no other, uh, locations. I'm starting to come back out to the community again. Uh, if you want, you can, you know, re, you know, contact the, uh, Brant Prairie Library where I did the yoga for men class. I can give you some references there if you wish to do that, as well as HF Racket Club. Yes, ma'am.
Was Dixmo your first choice or your last choice? Have you been anywhere else to offer your free service?
Uh, so in response to your question, Dixmo was not my last choice. Uh, I, I started to reach out to other places as well. Uh, I was looking at, you know, Olympia Field. Uh, at that time, they was filled up. They had different yoga, uh, practices going on at that time. So I said, okay, that's fine. And so I just continue and I'm going to continue to reach out. I'm from the South suburban community and I'm going to continue to reach out to various South suburban communities as well outside of Dixmo.
Okay, yeah, definitely. I would like to touch bases with you a little more. So we get a phone number, you have a card?
I don't, yeah, but everything is on there where you can reach me.
Okay, I'll be giving you a call, the, okay, with the board, so we just touch bases.
Yeah, once you, once, once you get in touch with them, who else will you? Okay, so, so these will be the three?
And you're, you're, you're.
You're talking, don't, don't get me wrong. You're speaker, then then everybody. But these ones is over that particular apartment with the community center.
Okay.
Trustee Tyson, trustee Smith, and trustee Webster, then of course, which you can always talk with all of the trustees, uh, trustee Janice. Talk to any of us, we work together.
So you're gonna give your card, you're gonna give your card? Uh, trustee Tyson? Trustee Tyson, okay.
What you doing is let all of the trustees know us.
Real, real quick, I'd like to say this. You guys, you guys may or may not know, but this was a gentleman, that was a project manager on that, on that facility.
Boil.
With Boil Construction Company. When I did all the inspections over here for that, this is the gentleman that I worked with over there. That I, that I met every morning to do the inspections as that, as that center was being built.
Okay, so that he was already familiar with?
Right.
Okay, I'll give you a call. I'll give you a call tomorrow. All right?
Okay.
Well, no questions from me. You know, I'll just be looking at like I said, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Appreciate you.
Next on agenda for.
Mr. Thompson, LCS group two, Mr. Thompson, can you please bring your presentation in?
Should we do ten minutes, can you do the bits first?
No, I'm trying, I'm waiting. Get your group in, then we.
So Mr. Ketchum, Mr. Smith?
Hey, you all, you, you gotta leave. Okay, go ahead. Have a nice night.
We all.
Take it easy. Anyone else need to leave right now?
Do we, do we need anything, do we need anything more?
No, you can, no, you, you, you can leave if you like. Because we got, you know, more people coming in and trying to. No, she, 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 she wanted to come to the facility when she asked to be. Okay, there's somebody here to show. I would appreciate it.
Hi.
Good day.
Shut up.
Oh. Um, this is Mr. Mohammed. He's the representative, uh, representative of LCS group two company. Let me explain how the company clearly exists. Because I was, I came back into the system, I was looking over the state. Uh, the comprehensive plan that the state had worked with us, uh, on before. Uh, and then the state and C map had given us some information on how to develop a certain area in our community. We knew it was already, we approved it, we had voted on it four years ago. Okay, and so the company here had asked me to take a look to see if they had any property that may be available. And they made a proposal. And this is only a proposal to see if the village would be interested in help, uh, developing a gated community that may upscale gated community in the village of Dixmo. Um, I handed out the pamphlets. Did you have one, trustee? Uh, I thought everyone had it in their mailbox. If I missed a mailbox, I'm sorry.
I have it over.
Trust, check your mailbox too. We have some updated ones also. Uh, but the gentleman wants to make a presentation to see if the village is interested, so that we can see about moving forward. Uh, Charles is already acquiring properties. These properties have been vacant for quite a long time. And I'll tell you, the property is located between Western Avenue, Spalding to, I think that's Davis? Davis. Um, there's a land mass in there, it's tree inundated, uh, we have sad walks, we have infrastructure. But the property has just been sitting for a long time. He's willing to take the chance on building this closed gate community and developing this with a secure purpose in mind, to upscale our properties. If we found that we sold a house for two hundred and sixty thousand, I'm quite sure these properties would be put into an economical status that would be, um, interesting and new for the South suburban area. We also know that Amazon is close by, we're gonna try to do ice new development in the village. This is a way of bringing in a new subdivision that would be a very nice looking facility. Um, Mr. Mohammed, if you have any to present to the board. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Mr. Mohammed, um, need some, uh, partners, Lynn Lee, Thomas Ketchum. We would like the opportunity to develop this community, in this community, sixty units. And it's out of that clearly not supported. So we would like an opportunity for you to give permission to be able to develop these homes.
I agree.
Sorry.
Wait, I'm listening.
Well, that was, that was basically it, you know, I just, I submitted this and if you want some more information.
So, so, so what, what was your time, your time?
Well, um, if you would give us permission, we could be, um, we're sure we're ready. We could get started within the next sixty days to be clearing the land. And then by the spring of twenty-two, there would be houses there.
And where is, where is it gonna be?
Right, at, if you go straight down Spalding. And right past the, um, the, the expressway. And then between that space and Davis Court and then Western.
Spalding. Trustee Smith?
Um, I, you all have never been here before, have you, before the?
We, we had.
I do. You, you guys wanting to build something over, you, you remember this?
Yes.
A, a wood or some, I, I thought I recalled you, cause I remember her presentation. Um, yeah, I, I thought I recalled you guys. So now, I don't know what became was that, but it's basically the same.
No.
That's what you wanted.
No, different, no.
That was, we were looking to build a factory.
Right.
But we now acquired fifteen acres in Lindwood, we're building a factory there.
Okay.
That's what it was, it was a housing factory.
Where you can prefab house, where you can build houses, then move them.
Okay, alright, okay, I just remember I, I remember when I was on board and I remember. Okay.
Trustee Webster?
I'm kind of puzzled by, what type of house is, uh, I mean, how many units? You said sixty units?
Sixty units.
And how many bedrooms?
Four bedrooms. Let me, let me show you. If I can. Here, I don't know if your proposal has.
Yeah.
Okay. We have these, uh, um, first floor has about fifteen, two bedrooms on the first floor, two bedrooms on the second floor, so four bedroom units. Third floor, and second floor, there is on the other page.
But I, they're not saying sixty units.
So basically.
I, 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 I'm, oh, they're.
So, so basically what he's doing, he's presenting this tonight, which, which, which are, I, I believe is a good project that, uh, come in Dixmo because we, we'd like to build up Dixmo. So we're tired of looking at bacon lofts and trees and, and all the brush, weeds and so forth. But at the same time, uh, at the same time, board, uh, it still have to come before zoning committee board, which is something that's being set up right now.
So these are like apartments or are they homes? With saunas and balcony? Is there two-story rooms?
Yes. Two-story.
Now I see here is saunas, stay room, half dining room.
Yeah, that's right. Definitely, yes.
Oh, hey, how much that for me?
No, no, right, no. Yes.
Oh, um, do you have other, well, you have a factory where you manufacture homes? Do you have other projects in the South suburban area?
That's up south in the city of Chicago.
I'm sorry.
In the city of Chicago.
In the city of Chicago? Okay, alright, do you have, can you leave us the, where?
You know, something I can submit.
Okay.
So this is something, this is something that, uh, board is due up to you all to, um, for us to vote on. To move forward, but you only move forward, again, we gotta go through a zoning board committee. Then they'll bring recommendation to the board and then we'll move from there.
So right now, it's just.
So how, how you going to have something to do with any of these homes?
That's something you'll ask him once we. We don't, we don't, we don't want to support, are you ready to move already? First bid, right, okay. So, but, uh, nevertheless, uh, uh, what we'll be doing, again, we have to bring it to the zoning board. After the zoning board comes to the board of trustees and, uh, we'll go from there.
You'll see blueprints, floor plans, new designs, ideas for the two flats, maybe the three flats. How this will be laid out is for the future, but actually because we didn't want, I didn't want to have someone come in and, um, they don't have the approval of the board.
Right.
They don't have, you know, this is something that we're working with them to develop. We have to get control of all of the properties. Charles says we have twenty-four properties right now under our control, Charles.
Oh, up and downs Spalding?
Yes.
We got more than that.
Okay.
Literally.
Okay, so.
All up and downs Spalding.
This is the property that we did four years ago. We acquired all of these different properties, you know, village hall and all of the different properties. Well, now we're gonna go back and try to get these properties. But when we get them, we don't want to land bank them. We don't want to hold on to them. That's not what the property land development is about. We want to get these properties back on the tax rolls, make, there's gonna be residential needs. Amazon is hiring twenty-one hundred people. We have new trucking companies here. There are people that want to move into our area. We have new development, we're gonna be doing. This is a chance, you know, if those doesn't have a problem with people living over there and building rental homes along the tracks and around their area, why do we have to be substandard to them? We can build what we want. And I would take a nice, close, those homes down Spalding, they keep them up pretty good. You know, they look nice. So why not put some more homes in there? And I guarantee, promise you, uh, did you explain about the community, uh, the development in the twenty thousand square feet building? He wants to put a community room.
Community center, which is on the last, one of the last pages, you see the, um, which will.
It's this.
Make sure. This, this would be twenty thousand square foot of space for retail, for events. We want to have weddings, some different events they can have there. So this will be available besides the homes as well. So we can have this in this, yes. Right down the street, right down the street. Okay.
But tonight is just a presentation.
This is a presentation, I'm looking at new, new innovative type of situation. He has his plans, he'll be sending these in where the village is, uh, code enforcement and inspectors to take a look at the homes. The idea is to develop it as we, as we acquire property, we're gonna put this in a closed gate area, we're gonna be building constantly. And this is gonna be moved.
Oh, yeah.
So this is something that, uh, me and Mr. Ketchum, Thomas Ketchum is, um, the chairperson of planning and zoning in another community, but he has worked with, um, South suburban.
Action council.
Action council for a long time and.
Not a long time, this, this, this last year.
How many years now?
Uh, just this last year.
No, no, South suburban, not mayor's and manager, South suburban bit, uh, chamber of commons, excuse me.
Oh.
He's been working with the chamber of commons for a long time. So he's been watching new developments coming to the community. And he's come up with different ideas and he's asked me about this and so on. Dixmo has the opportunity. And I guarantee, promise you, once one development starts, you're gonna have other people coming in wanting to build bigger and newer developments. But right now, I know these people have a good program, a good opportunity and have big dreams. And big dreams of what we're looking for.
Okay, great. So they're, they're, okay, thank you.
So the program will move forward with this plan.
Okay, and thank you.
And we will be recording. And we will be recording as many times as necessary until we can get this started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time, and we're looking forward. We're looking forward, and I, I, I pray that you all be looking for more, to do our Dicksmore.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Bid opening. Great, can you talk about the one?
Okay.
The bid opening is for the CDBG, CDBG twenty-twenty block break. Uh, that's the approval for twenty thousand dollars, uh, I mean, two hundred thousand dollars, to do street approvals throughout the area. So, uh, she will explain, we had, uh, maybe, we had Robie, um, from one hundred forty-fourth to one hundred forty-fifth, we do that Blackney Street over the track. Uh, we also had, I think it was Cooper.
Dale.
Dale, and we also had Davis Court.
New Davis Court.
Hundred forty-third.
And we need a hundred forty-third street.
Yes, from Davis.
Hundred forty-third street.
To Western Avenue.
From Western to.
That was in Long.
That was, you met here, and I did share with everyone, you know, concerning the streets that had, that we didn't make, you know, that we was approved for.
Engineer Arnold.
Melon.
Melon.
Ms. Melon, yes, representing, uh, Robson Engineering. Where with Dixmore, uh, you were first, we used to have Ron Smith, now we have Ms. Melon who owns.
And she's been working with us really, really with the water project, and she's been out there.
Yes, she, she, she's our new contact, uh, Robson Engineering.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I hope to meet you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So, I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad that.
It just came out, I'm sorry.
So, I'm glad you are here tonight, and you, uh, where the trustees can meet you, and, uh.
Melon, did you have that sheet that you wanted?
She said she's gonna write it down now.
You gonna write it down?
I wrote it down.
Well, let me open it.
You want the casino?
Sure.
For our citizens, we have.
Uh, attention please. You still have a call, but, uh, Mr. Trucking, could you go see if you found my two boards?
Yes, sir. I'll try to turn them back in.
So, tonight, we have a bid opening. We have deconstruction, the first bid, it came in today, July twenty-first, I mean, twenty-second, at two P M. I'm gonna hand it over to John Topley, he's gonna hand it over to Melon.
Okay, this is, uh, deconstruction, this is our first bid. They have an estimate. And they are bonding, we have it on a letter of intent. I'm going to leave the estimated price.
And there's actually two schedules.
Two schedules?
The base bid and the alternate bid.
Okay, um, the bid we have here is three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents.
That the base of the, base bid, okay.
This is the base bid.
This is D?
This is D.
Three hundred, three hundred and twelve dollars, five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-five cent, that was the base bid for deconstruction.
It's the base.
Three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-five cent.
And the various bid is two hundred, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents. So, the reason we have two bids here is because, one, uh, we already know that we only have two hundred thousand dollars. So, we're gonna just give this, this various, a secondary bid to do what we have to do, just to keep it within the framework of what we have on the grounds. And this one. The second amount.
Two hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents. The next bid is Gallagher Asphalt.
Gallagher Asphalt. They have their bond. And there's a tree bond, and they are, they have the bid bond that's attached. Surety. And their, their estimate.
The base bid, that right over here.
This is the scheduled base bid, this is the various bid. The various bid is two hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cent. And the alternate bid is two hundred and seven thousand, two hun- two hundred and one dollars and fifty-five cents, that's two oh seven, two oh one, fifty-five.
Was that the base bid or not?
This is the various bid, and alternative bid, I should say, the first one was the base bid, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, was the base bid. The various bid is two hundred and seven thousand, two oh one, fifty-five. And the last one.
Okay, five. Okay, five.
Okay, five.
And then, okay, five. Deconstruction. We have the proposed bid bond. Documents. Alternative. And chart of statement, and we have all documents. Base bid. Two hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-five cent. Alternate bid, two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Period. And, uh, as of this time, I'd like to turn all of the bids over to the engineer, village engineer, to review and make their final recommendation, and we'll come back, we'll allocate the bidding. And the information will be given to, to the trustee.
Thank you.
Thank you. And a copy of this will be available for the village clerk in her report.
Can you please bring people back from the insurance?
Oh, yes. Let's see, go down there, they go, they let you get self-insured on, and they'll get together, okay. Bring them in right now, okay.
Thanks for your call. And live while I'm talking to you. Yes. Next is the insurance presentation.
Is anyone here for the insurance presentation?
We apologize for the.
I'm calling right now, I, I, I understand, we, uh, say.
Your name is?
Uh, my name is Sam Culliam, with Culliam Insurance Agency. Uh, I, I, I'm here today, and I have my daughter with me to do it, in your neighboring town of Culliam City. To do a presentation, uh, this week, probably about three, two months ago. This young lady was in a structure fire. And they had to rescue her out of the structure fire. Uh, and it was one out of the movies. Fire truck comes through, arm stick, stop, stick your arm out, take her and rescue her down there, but she's doing fine. So, we want to honor the fire department and policemen and all that, so that's why, uh, it was a little late getting here to do it, but. Uh, today, I am here just to let you know, I am very excited and hopeful that I will have an opportunity to be a part of your, your team.
Yes, sir.
And a little background about me, for those who don't know, I, I am Sam Culliam, I'm a twenty-two-year veteran of public service in the city of Waukegan. Alderman to thirty-two, mayor, post-mayor, and now in the industry. So, I'm quite familiar with all the things that all of you do to be public servants. And, and of course, I know your jobs are hard. I know everybody don't understand what it takes to provide the level of service that is expected from your citizens, business community, and other business partners. I understand. But at the same time, you've got to provide and give the service that they want. And that requires decision-making. Everybody don't want to sit in your seat. Some think they do, but they don't. I am a service guy. We might be called village, we might be called city, we might be called state, but we deliver a service. That's what we do for a living. And we surely don't do it for what? The money. We do because we care and believe that our community needs it. When I, when I was in Alderman, I brought my insurance background of twenty-nine years in the industry, started off, started with Metropolitan Life, moved over to Allstate, owning my own insurance agency. And I got to see the government, what did I find out? Liability. What are our biggest costs? Liability. Police, fire, public works, slipping and falling. If we reduce those liabilities, then we can do help, we can do what? Take those, those reductions, put them into our operations, and provide better services for our community. That's what I do. I tell people all the time, I sell service. When I was a kid, thirteen, I worked at this crew stand up at the age twenty-two. Saint Pete sent to these, he used to tell me, treat the customer right, they'll treat you right. I tell you the same thing, I talk, I brought that same philosophy, treat our taxpayers right, they'll treat us right. I'm here to tell you, give us an opportunity, Culliam Insurance Agency, my affiliate, which is Charlie Melon, give us opportunity to take a look at what you have, give an assessment, present a plan, execute. Those are fundamental things, not rocket science. I truly believe that I can bring not only my automatic, my mayor, my long-term public service, but more importantly, my heart toward your community will need in order to get back on track. But make no mistake about it, mayor, uh, trustee, Al, whatever name that describes how your village operates, we must look at our liability costs, reduce those, put those savings into operations. We can do that over a five, ten, fifteen-year period, and make that part of what our organization is, I promise you this, you will see those savings. They're tough, but they're necessary. If we want to provide the level of services expected from our residents, business community, and other business partners. With that being said, I know it's a long night, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present myself. Once I'm able to get all of your sentences, any information, to put a plan together, I'll come back with a more thorough presentation. Thank you again. Uh, are there any, any brief questions for me?
Trustees?
No, I, I was, um, um, waiting, would you send us? Thank you, you, now, you, you did say that you now in Culliam City?
No, I, I, I was just over there for, uh, I came down here and doing that, but I, I'm in Waukegan, but, listen, if the opportunity is, is given, uh, uh, I'm gonna do it, man. I'm about getting it done. I'm about getting it done, so, uh, that's where I'm at. Are there any other questions for?
So, did all the trustees, uh, receive?
Through an information management?
Through an email?
Hey, nobody picking a decision, it's not.
Right, I'm just trying to find out, if you want to hear your questions, if you want to be read, or email at this time?
Cause, cause I was asking too, is that you wanted to see what we're working with, and you put a plan.
Yeah, you, you have to. Yeah, you, you, you have to, and it's anybody, and, and, and true transparency, all of you know, you gotta give us the sentences. And, and, it, it is what it is, just put it down, and we'll, you make the decisions.
That's fair.
That's fair. Everybody, got a long trip back, it has been a pleasure coming up to the South Suburbs, and, uh, I'll be seeing all of you hopefully soon. Guys, I, I will still, when I leave, please, take care of yourself, certainly try to stay healthy. I, I will tell you to stay home, but you can't. God bless you all. You know, I used to say, Waukegan is strong out, I'm gonna say Dixmore. You should have told me it was Denver here, out, out of.
Y'all be careful.
Take care. Do you have one more, right?
There's no one else.
Oh, okay, I'll get it.
Okay. Next, only agenda.
Discussions of appropriations, says the board, motion and motion to approve of certain I E P A and I D A legislation.
Yes, um, good evening, everyone, thank you for the time. Um, this is just a motion to acknowledge the previously passed I E P A approvals to go forward with that project, and the I D A, um, approvals to go forward with that project. I need, and all it is to acknowledge the fact that we approved these items, which included the, uh, the financing for the lead pipe water. We run the lead pipe water program.
Sumner, so I'm looking for a motion to pass the I D O T legislation for the lead pipe program, looking for a motion.
Uh, Trustee Smith gone, make that motion.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Tony Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Denise Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
So, move so through.
Smith, Webster. Next, approval of building, I think, that's Saturday, June, July thirty-first.
Trustee Smith, make that motion.
I'm second.
Second.
Roll call, first.
Trustee Frank Muse? Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Now, something that we didn't say is what time? So, that's what we, you know, that's, you know, but we have that day, but now we just have to come over, have that time, and put some flying back.
How about ten o'clock? Nine o'clock?
Yeah, I like that.
Nine o'clock A M.
And also, we would like.
We meet up, we meet up, where, Village Hall?
We meet at Village Hall, but we would like, uh, we need to put a flying back, because we would like for residents, if they will, to, uh, work on their block. Know, like maybe pick up or clean, clear lots.
Right. So what we do, we have a flyer, state cleanup day. And, uh, also we will ask for the residents to come out, volunteer, get to meet their neighbors and help clean up.
They can't bring out like the big old TVs if they sit down on Austin Lane.
No, no electronics. Uh, you know, we have, we had a flyer on pretty much what they set out because the thirty-first is
Saturday this week.
All, all nobody can get the county out here. I'll check and see if I can get the county to come out here with their truck and, uh, pick up the TVs and stuff because they do it all the time.
Okay.
Uh, so I'll get in touch with someone from the county, see if we can meet that.
And you, and you did talk to, oh, you talked to the county?
Yes.
So you're gonna do it?
Yes. Matter of fact, your township came out and helped us, uh, stay before yesterday.
Yeah, I know.
Lots of stuff around. So they always coming out here.
Okay, good. So, yeah. And, and we can title it, Make Dixmore Beautiful.
Sounds good. So, so, uh, that motion, that, that motion is going forward.
Yes, sir. It carried.
And it carried, so next on the agenda will be, uh, approval of zoning committee. That's something we were just talking about earlier again. To get the, uh, new builders in and certain spots, we need the zoning committee, uh, so I'm looking for approval.
I approve. Trustee Smith, uh, I made the motion. Uh, I mean, I made the motion.
Everybody make the motion.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by Tony Mitchell, trustee.
Okay, and, uh, the committee, of course, they have to be residents here in the village of Dixmoore. And also, uh, outside of that, you will have, of course, the attorney will be on there.
So
Yeah.
So myself and Mr. Thompson will essentially oversee the committee. Uh, and that's for a technical guidance and legal guidance. The board members will be invited to attend, but by state law, you cannot sit as a zoning board member and be on the board. The board members, the board members is proposed, uh, by the mayor, and I think he's talked to somebody about this. Ira Rolar, Mr. Gus Hurd, uh, Mr. Quammy, Caleb Roberts, Robert Johnson, Will Webster, and Keith McGrath. Those are the board members that are being proposed at the mayor's time.
Oh, that's nice. We, we all need the motion at, don't we?
We do. We need a motion. Motion's been made. That's not gonna, we need, now we need to do it.
So what, can you give us like a brief overview of zoning committee and?
Absolutely. So the zoning committee, the zone, the joint planning and zoning board of the village, they get projects. Essentially, people file an application and they, when there needs to be a zoning change or a subdivision change, and when a zoning change is because the density levels change. Or there's supposed to be apartments, they're single-family homes. Or there's a limit of fifty feet and they want to go to seventy-five feet. So all those things come in for either special use permit, a variance, or a change of zoning district. There's other things too, both of them, the nature of tonight's talk here that is that they make a recommendation to this board, this board to follow the recommendation, or they can reject the recommendation. And it is a good way to further, I'm going to ask in some instances, when we dispose of property, it goes before the zone planning and zoning board as well. When we approve a development, if there's a lot of impact on the community, at least let them recommend it to you before what their thoughts are on it. Um, it's, the zoning board, and the last thing I'm saying, it, it's kind of a tragedy in so much that the village has not had a constituted planning and zoning board in excess of four years. And it is literally the only place that I know that has a zoning board. So it's something that we can rectify now, and it's timely because we have this development coming on, and obviously the other projects we've been talking about. So essentially, they are a recommending body on how we use our land, or how the people are allowed to use their land in the city, and then they come here for approval. Does that help, trustee?
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, of course.
And it's good, and, and, and it's good to have a resident really to be involved with, so so if, if,
So there's a, Mr. Robert Johnson, I guess he can't serve. Uh, he's just, he's electing that. He won't, he won't accept it if we don't. So we're looking for Mr., Ms. Donnelly? Okay, Ms. Donnelly, she is a village resident.
Yes.
Okay, she's a village resident. Um, so, um, those, so that would be the only replacement.
All right, so I'll make the motion.
You make the motion, sweetheart. The second was by Tony Mitchell.
Oh, Tony, oh, sorry.
And with the names as listed, as we just revised.
Okay.
Ms. and trustee Angela Frank Mewes?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
So move so approved. Don't be big.
Mayor, we approve of that jerk spot by Lakeisha Hunter. I don't know if she's on, but she did bring all her paperwork into the office. And she's gonna be mobile. You do have her certificate, her license, and everything. She could be here tonight because she already had another event that she wanted to apologize.
Is anyone online to give this sign off?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes, this is she. How you guys doing this evening? Good, thank you. Yes, I'm Lakeisha Hunter, uh, the owner of that jerk spot. Um, I had a brick and border, but now I'm in a full trailer. And I drive around Chicago from the south to the, um, south side, Haynes and Crest, over to, um, Oak Park, and it was the interest to also, um, come and, um, come to Dixmoore and, um, that, that high demand. I did a couple functions over there, private functions in Dixmoore. And, um, the request for me to be in your area, uh, was great. So I decided to, um, come on over and, um, hopefully you guys will allow me to, um, serve in your area.
She have all the license, she has license.
Yes.
And she, she's local?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, she'll just come over whenever she want. I make the motion.
And, 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 and another, well, motion on before we even say it.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay. No, no, you're fine, you're fine. Because, you know, after you do it, then you can also, uh, just go for a discussion. And one of the things, the other thing, I kind of appreciate, uh, her coming asking for a license because I've been seeing a lot of paddling going on out here where people don't come in and get a license. So I think it's good that, you know, I'm glad she reached out to get a license before she just came pulling up with her mobile
Oh, definitely.
Restaurant and, uh, asks for a license that we in Village Will, receive revenue, you know, with her license, and I pray to everyone else, you know, trustees, if we see somebody out there doing that type of thing, uh, uh, we, we, and we haven't approved it, then I think we should notify the police, the property authorities where they were in terms, go through to have them to stop and come in and get a license.
Trustee Frank Mewes?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden? You got five yens and one abstain, ma'am. We got approval of Keith Allen. Uh, they need to go to Keith Allen. He's just a home-based business where he's working out, uh, the house as far as his office.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Keith, go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to thank the board, thank the mayor, thank, uh, the clerk, Darin, for going back and forth with me with the emails. Uh, my name is Keith Allen. I am the CEO of Right Choice Logistics. Um, I have a few accounts that I'm growing each and every day. And as I grow, I would love to be able to extend some employment opportunities to some of the citizens of Dixmoore. And what I do is, um, I have a Blue Cross Blue Shield mail run from downtown Chicago to different areas of the suburbs. And these, uh, mail parties need to be dropped off, you know, pretty much immediately. I start every morning at four A.M. Um, and throughout the day, I'm just picking up packages and dropping them off. And when it's, it's getting to the point where I'm gonna be needing some help and hiring someone. So that's why I submitted my application to get a business license to the village of Dixmoore.
So, Mr. Allen, the question that some of the board members asked, are you gonna have trucks in the driveway over there, or what are you actually gonna have?
No, no, there's no trucks. I don't, I don't use semi trucks. I use my own personal vehicle to pick up these, uh, products from downtown Chicago and move them around to the different suburbs. And when I hire somebody, they're just gonna use their own vehicles left.
Yeah, like a carrier service.
Yeah, like a messenger, like a messenger, messenger, aerial service, correct.
You have a caution?
He's a resident.
He's a resident, yes, on hundred forty-second.
And this, well, yeah, I, I do have a, a question. This is, uh, trustee Frank Mewes. Uh, my question is, once you become so busy with the home, um, if you may have multiple cars in and out, is it gonna be disruptive to the neighborhood in any way?
No, 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 no. See, what it is, is I start my mornings in my vehicle. I leave Dixmoore and I go to my stops downtown Chicago to pick up the mail. Once I hire someone from the village of Dixmoore, that's also what they'll be doing as well. There's no vehicles that's gonna be in, in, in the driveways over at Twenty-two West Hundred Forty-Second Street or wherever I hire someone from, from Dixmoore. They're gonna leave their residence in their vehicle as long as they have valid driver's license and the proper insurance to show me that they can drive their vehicle. They're gonna be moving about downtown Chicago and the surrounding suburbs, drop, picking up and dropping off mail.
Okay, so the mail picked up is not at your home. It's, it's
No, 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 no.
I understand.
The mail picked up, the mail picked up is at two-eleven South Clark Street, at the main post office downtown Chicago.
Uh, okay. Uh, I also have a question. This is trustee McFadden. Will your vehicles that you use be identified by some type of decal?
Yes. Um, once I get enough money coming in, I'll have my own stickers and magnets on the, on the vehicles. And that will be able to, uh, satisfy everyone that we're picking up from and dropping off to, but for now, we just use I.D. cards. Because in order to get, in order to get into the post office downtown Chicago, you have to be able to show your I.D. to get down there because it's up underneath the federal building downtown Chicago.
So, Mr. Two News and Mr. Charles Johnson came over there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, board, I'm, I'm looking for a motion uh, to approve Mr. Keith Allen, uh, home-based business.
Trustee Smith is making the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, you had another question?
No, no, she made the motion.
Oh, and that's fine. I said, trustee Smith second.
Trustee Frank Mewes?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Six yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion and approval of items.
So in reverse order, uh, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
In reverse order, there's approval of part-time police officers on that. Those, so in reverse order, um, if you look at the bottom of the list, approval of part-time police officers, those have not had background checks set. We always do background checks before we hire anyone. So actually, if you, if I can, Mr. Chair, if I can get a motion to table that um, to the, um, next regular meeting of the board.
I'm making the motion to table.
I say for a motion.
Say, I'm saying.
And then discussion.
There is no discussion and motion table. Yeah, trust me.
Oh, I told you table, um.
Trustee? Trustee Mewes?
Yes.
Trustee Webster? Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Six yay, so table to the next meeting.
Thank you. I just wanted to knock that out. But so, approval of opposing I G A. That is the I G A that was regarding the police cruisers from opposing. We distributed that to everyone, and I believe, um, the mayor is in favor of it. I look over it. It's a simple agreement, but one that I can stand behind. I, Mr. Chair, if, um, we could look for a motion on that.
Looking for a motion.
And I said.
Most of our Webster's second by Janita Smith. Trustee Janita Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Mewes?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Six yay.
Approval of HVAC, oh, Mr. Chair, may I? Mr. Chair, uh, approval of an HVAC repair rehabilitation. I believe that there are certain, um, systems, HVAC systems that need repair on village-owned property. Um, we are, are we seeking bids or are we?
What, it's, it's
They're finishing.
It's AC unit, uh, number one. You gotta excuse me, I had a slight moment because it brought all over the shop yesterday morning, but anyway, uh, we, um, we have three units. That's probably about a year and a half over at the center. Though none of them work. And, and, and it's just plain, to me, it's plain ridiculous. Anytime you spend it right at more than a million and a half dollars on a building, on AC units or anything over there, and it's no good, it's only been on really one year because last year it wasn't on due to COVID, and we, they're not working out. So I reached out to, uh, Board of Construction company, and he put me in contact with the people that installed the unit. So I should be talking to him next week on seeing what's under warranty and what's not. So, uh, I had one contractor that come over and he said we could be looking at about four thousand dollars per unit. We have three units over here. Then I had another contractor. They just come and look, they, they didn't, they weren't charging nothing to come in, you know, check and look. He told me six thousand dollars per unit. Again, I actually got sick behind it because we, all that money we spent over here. And it's just outrageous how they just messed over the, how the money was just, uh, uh, misappropriated and didn't nobody really, uh, go behind them to check to see if the units was correctly installed because a couple of the units was just running and the valves was turned off on the unit. They never turned the valves on after installing new units. So nevertheless, uh, we have an issue with that, and, uh, it needs to be addressed quickly because if not during the summer, you might not be able to use that center over there.
Now, you say that we'll be speaking to the, what do you call them, subcontractor? And you're saying that that valve was off. So, um, once you speak to them, of course, you're gonna tell them that and hopefully that they'll come over and take responsibility. I hope. Um, it, cause it was their fault.
But see, I mean, we can, we can say it was their fault, but I really can't pin it on anyone because they used the system for a year. And, and then turned around again, COVID came, so now here's another year. So I mean, you look at at least two years. But at the same time, the gentleman, he, he was nice on the phone and stated that he would come out next week. He let me know what's going on. Of course, the parts are under warranty, uh, for the unit. I also talked to board and, uh, told them that I need all invoices. I want all invoices of the I want all invoices of the work that was done over here. Because there's no way I said to anybody, and I pray that the state is listening to this, that there is no way a million and a half plus dollars have been spent just on mechanicals, drywall and the type of flooring that they have in that gym. That's ridiculous. And I said it before and I stand on it because all the stuff that was put in that building came from the dollars. Including the windows and doors. So yes, I get upset when I talk about it. So let me get off that soapbox right now. And, uh, residents, please excuse me for feeling like this, but when it come to them spending the taxpayer money like that and just don't care, they just, just like they just vanish off the earth. Yes, I have a, I have a serious issue and we will, myself including this board and everyone sitting up here, will be dealing with their issues. And they will be sorry. Thank you. It's a motion on the board, uh, board for us to, uh, get this, uh, A.C. system going.
I make the motion.
I'll say.
Most of it by Mitch, Mitchell, I know, seconded by Webster, trustee Frank New?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
You guys, six Y's, man.
Thank you. And, 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 and board again, uh, you gotta excuse me for the way I feel, but I, I, I'm just, the stuff that we've been going through here don't make no sense. So we gonna stick with the agenda and the people that's out there that's listening to this, you know what I'm talking about. So if you don't know, you will see what I'm talking about. God's will. Give me a couple more months to deal with this. Thank you.
We're at the board.
Approval of fee schedule.
So, these are, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you. These are two separate items and they've been solidated under one. Arguably, we could add two which are items on it, but we're just going to, uh, if we can take two separate items under that.
The government is new, for me, I just need to step up. Thank you.
So the fee schedule is one for, um, one is for the fees on what is going to be charged for people to use the rec center. And the second are the fees for contract employed contractors that will be working at the center. So let's talk about the first one. Um, we are working on a fee schedule for the rec center. Uh, I do not, maybe trustee Tyson has that number.
Well, there is nothing current right now, I mean, from the administration.
Sure. Actually, there is thing, thought of actually imposing a fee schedule for people to use the rec center. I do not have that in the order.
Like, we do have something in the system that some people's being charged, so I can try to pull it out again.
Well, it was being charged. Some was charged, so it wasn't.
I mean.
And we haven't been hit that. Oh, wow, I can't.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we don't have the fee schedule, we can't approve. Like, we would need a number. And I think the thought would be to look at regional park districts and our recreational centers and track, say, what the Carvey Park District, for example, is charging their residents to use the facilities. As a preliminary matter, um, as a preliminary matter, uh, if one of the trustees wants to make a motion. So we could table it?
Table it for now.
We wanna table it, okay. We wanna table it. Sorry, the thought is to table.
What, uh, I wanted to say also, um, cause I did speak to, to, um, to, to John. Um, and the previous mayor, Armstrong, about this community center, whether it was, uh, I guess, um, not actually built, but what it was said is that that community center, um, needs to generate its own revenue from the rental, like, uh, rentals need to pay for maintenance, like, so like you're saying, you're gonna come up with a, a fee schedule. And I, I talked to John, cause he's going to look for the parks grant because in that parks grant, it should tell what the village is responsible for. Uh, as far as, um, you know, I, I just know that the village is still the village's facility, but, um, it, it, it has to generate some funds or, uh, uh, a revenue stream. And, and he, he, he's looking for that too, cause I just want to read it. Like I said, there's some responsibilities, uh, that the village is responsible for along with, um, you know, the, the parks, cause it was one point five billion dollars.
So. There's a motion for a specific, and a second slide.
Second, oh, yes, uh, trustee Smith motion.
Mayor, we didn't have a fee schedule set out on the issue for establishing the fees, uh, but when we do have a fee schedule, the trustee Smith made a good point and we discussed, uh, I relay what we discussed, that we were gonna look to surrounding area, park districts and rec center to establish where we're. God, we don't have the numbers right now to approve. Unless you have the numbers to approve. Okay, okay. So then there's a motion to second table.
Trustee Frank New?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Six Y's to table to the fee schedule.
Mr. Chair, do you want to have trustee second item too?
Yes.
All right, so the, for the rec center, the second item relative to the rec center is a fee schedule for those contracted for ten ninety-nine employees that are going to work to both maintain and direct the center. Uh, so what we'll do tonight is we will establish what their fees are to get paid to do that service. Um, I, I'll make a disclosure here. Sorry, I'm trustee Tyson. So, um, the two people are contracted for employees. They are, um, related to trustee Tyson. Um, it has been my, um, admission and he actually, let me rephrase that. Trustee Tyson came to me and he said, I really feel more comfortable abstaining on this vote. He will abstain. They are his parents. They have been working there for at least five weeks free of charge. Um, they do not share any bills. Is that correct? They share no bills. They share no financial obligations. They will work there as ten ninety-nine contracted for employees. When I talked to this with trustee Tyson, he wanted to make sure that if we did go forward with this, that none of the members of corporate authorities, meaning the board of trustees and the mayor, had any objection to this simply because of the familial relationship. They will be governed by a contract. The contract will be terminated on thirty days' notice. And, um, so that was just one thing. Uh, we wanted to, trustee Tyson made it abundantly clear and he won't be aside, he wanted to make it very clear. I'll let him speak for himself. He's an able and competent trustee and for some time. Uh, but he wanted, now, we're putting it on the record, he wanted to make it very clear that he did not want the fact he is related to these people to enforce the decision of anyone in there.
Table. I'm in a vote. He making a vote.
That we need to know what their fees are.
Uh, I.
He didn't say. Oh.
Okay, so, um, do I need to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion here.
I'll make a motion to, um, mend the agenda for the service contract employee or ten ninety-nine personnel for the community center. Um, and
And the fees that they are getting charged.
So, uh, they, I'm gonna read this as written. Um, further from where the village of Dixmore agrees, shall pay a stipend in the amount of fifty-two hundred dollars to Dwayne Tyson Senior for services rendered. Um, and I will add, um, Robbie Tyson for services rendered, uh, with the following correction. And that is from June first to, uh, excuse me, June first, twenty twenty-one to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion, I'll say.
I make it, I'll say.
I'll say.
A motion by you, seconded by Webster.
And that includes a thirty-day termination clause, correct?
Thirty-day termination.
Okay, we're gonna put it on the record. Okay, thank you.
So, uh, so you saying from June to September fifty-two hundred?
Yes.
If that's the ball. Um, now, when we, when I was talking about generating, generating, uh, revenue from that community center, that's not including that. That's gonna come out of our general fund. Okay, uh, that should have been discussed with the finance department because I need to know if we even have it to cover.
Let's see, we have to do, trustee.
Okay.
Uh, again, once we get the, uh, revenues, you know, get, get the price figures together. It'd pretty much be paying for a set. You know, once we get the price figures together on how we gonna start running this place out over there. We gotta get it up and going right now. It's just sitting dormant.
Yeah.
And, and, and they have been over there, cause I go by and check, and they have been over there cleaning and mopping and doing the floors and just keeping the place clean because right now, you know, beforehand, the place just sitting with lights on and the kids have no place to go. So now the kids do have a place to go. The kids in the neighborhood all over is welcome to come and they've been running this gym program. So, and, and the gym program, to me, is, uh, is looking good and you got more residents coming in and the gym, and, and so for the amount that they are saying from June to
September.
September, to the thirtieth of September, that's pretty, that pretty much covered a whole summer and some. And then also you have other individuals, uh, such as certain businesses out here that's gonna start donating some stuff too. So, I mean, we, we gotta get it going. And then another thing that we got coming there, uh, that Mr. John Thompson brought up that we should be getting in from the state. We will have funds coming in from there. I think it's like fifty-three thousand dollars that'll be coming in for the, uh, center over there along the, since I paid to work in on time. So it pretty much is gonna take care of itself.
And I, I went, and I wasn't disputed what I'm saying. And that's why I said, Tyson, okay, this should have come through the finance committee. Cause I, I, cause you, you know, I said that that, that center, what you already said, it's gonna generate its own funds. Um, I, well, we, cause we looking for that community center to, for a revenue stream, okay? And we not always gonna be having that, that free, you know, cause we, that, that center has to generate its own funds. Uh, and I was just saying that we came up with this amount and that's, that's fine, cause that's good for those four months, whatever. Um, it would have been good if we would have charged, um, a minute, uh, just a little small fee for each one of the summer campers. Um, cause I, I get, I'm, I'm sure you talked to Tripp, uh, about whether or not this is, we have it. But I mean, I wanna make the motion to do it, but I would like you all, before you, in the future, bring it through the committee so we can know what we work, uh, I mean, what we spending and whether or not we have it. Um, so we can kind of negotiate something or say we do not have it. That's, that's all I'm saying in the future. And also with this committee, I'm gonna ask you to, um, get a fee schedule and strictly use that, cause I'm looking at that, like the mayor said, it should generate, um, funds.
Yeah, and it takes time. I mean.
No, that, that's fine. So I'll make the motion.
It's already was motion.
Oh. Oh, we're in discussion.
Motion by, seconded by Webster. Frank New?
Yes.
Webster, trustee Webster. Trustee Tyson? Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And trustee McFadden?
Yes.
My year is in one of them saying, motion quit.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
Yes, yes, sir.
If I could, um, the money that's allocated for the summer programs, some of the youth services, um, so that's covered, that's how we're able to cover that, um, in the, in our budget. So we're fine with that. And I think we discussed that a little bit.
Right.
Trustee Tyson, yeah. So we have about six thousand dollars left in the youth service budget, um, after this, ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
I just wanted to say. That Mr. Mike Castle is doing a fantastic job with funds. I really do think he is.
Okay.
You think he is?
Yeah.
Say you got some pink paper over there.
Yeah. Announcement, though, announcement. Okay, board, once again, the I.M.L. is coming up September twenty-third to twenty-fifth of September. Also, we have a special meeting slash public hearing. The public hearing is gonna be next week, July twenty-eighth at six-thirty P.M. Right after you got a special meet agenda, it's gonna be the approved appropriation ordinance for May first, twenty twenty-one and end in April third, year twenty twenty-two.
Did we miss one? Huh? Did we miss? Are we on announcement?
Yeah.
We missed the part-time police officer?
No, we tabled it.
We tabled it. Remember, that was the, he hasn't done
The background.
The background cast. The four hundred should dance in the cast. Hasn't done the background shots.
Okay. Senior bingo day is held the last month of, last Monday of the month, starting July twenty-sixth from one until three P.M. Bingo cards, fifty-six each, or three hundred dollars. It's gonna be at the Thorne Township Senior Center in Cadment City. So I'm going fast, mayor. Riverdale's Se- Senior Lodge is typically location at Park Elementary School in Riverdale.
Nope, I don't have it. It has a front.
No. Next week, we'll talk about the baseball game for the Dixmore Lively Board. We did have two people sign up today.
Okay.
I'll keep announcing that board meeting for August thirteenth. Thank you.
And, um, also, clerk.
Uh, trustee Mitchell?
I wanna make for a matter of record that I also asked Mr. McCastro to do background checks on the first officers that came through here, cause we did not. And it's not fair that he, he's doing background checks on other officers and not these. So they, we gave these officers, what, a ninety-day?
Ninety days.
A, a what?
Ninety days.
Ninety day to a year probation?
No, it was only ninety day probation.
Ninety day is okay.
No.
Not yet.
No, so he has to make sure he does a background check on these officers. I just wanna make that for a matter of record. It's not fair for you to do other background checks on these other officers and not them.
The motions, trustee, if I may, all the motions that were made, including the motion that was made the first night, I think it was May thirteenth, and then the night after, the, the extended, uh, special meeting on the Saturday, May, uh, November fifteenth, um, starting around noon. Um, all of the, every motions we made were made contingent on, and all candidates passing a background check from both the police department and H.R. and having a written report from H.R. saying that they are eligible to go forward. So it's a very good point taken, but I want you to make, I just want you to be confident that we've already built that in in the process and they all have to get the proper background check from both police
Oh.
and H.R. and a written report from H.R. saying that they can go forward and be police officers.
But these officers are on the street already. That's what I'm saying. That's, that's, they're not making, they have not been background checked.
These are officers, they, 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 they.
Have they, well, voted? No, they shouldn't have. Have they, Mr. McCastro?
Not the ones that we did for the birthday meeting. I have that opportunity to do it.
So, no, they have not been background checked. So they should be background checked. If we back, background checked the rest of them, they should, we should background check them as well.
Agreed, agreed a hundred percent, but just to make sure it's on the record. Also. Also, that, number one, we hit zero officers here. We haven't had no problems. And also, the Illinois State Training Board was contacted and they was out here concerning all our officers. And with the Illinois State Training Board, there was nothing found in them.
There's nothing wrong with doing a background check.
So, well.
They got to, because we don't know that. We don't, I don't have any paperwork saying if they went past the Illinois State Board or whatever the case may be. He has to do the background check to, just, just to make sure that we doing proper for all of it. And, uh, because you can't do that with the rest of them and not do it with them.
I, I don't think the mayor's not saying that, I think the mayor's in favor of that. He is just putting on the record, trustee, that, uh, state, the state licensing board.
That's right.
Anyone.
Did you have that, Mr. McCaslin?
Again, 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 what I'm saying here is this part here. Mr. McCaslin, please do the background check on them guys. Do, do you, do ju, do diligence of the background check on them guys. But, again, before they hit our street, we did have the Illinois State Training Board to check them out. Illinois State Training Board background is way harder than any other background you can get.
Well, we need it for record.
But, fine, we can, we can get the record over. Make sure she get that record, uh, from the Illinois State Training Board.
Well, I can't, I can't.
Okay, okay. Well, you check it and make sure that everything check out with the Illinois State Training Board. And then you can do your own background with it also.
That's fine with me, that's fair.
Go ahead, trustee.
I'm a little confused here, because McCaslin said he did the background check. And I do re.
Not the first time.
I'm sorry. Um, I remember him stating that one of we had to do silver service. And he was five, that was an emergency, until they just rushed him through.
First five.
Where about that? Okay, well, I mean, no, I said what I said.
The mayor, I was, yeah, you guys always say, so, all right.
Next one, Mr. Junior clerk?
Public comment. You have a public comment?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment?
Hello?
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 My name is Wesley from Benj L.L.C.
From Tennessee? From Tennessee?
Benj L.L.C.
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. I have for today night for the board, for the license for the two-two-seven-five, one thirty-nine street. To be for the company, it's for the P.T.C. Alliance.
Are y'all listening?
Hi. You, you hear me?
No.
Yes, I hear you.
But I can't understand what you're saying. You have to speak a little more clearly.
Hello, I am his interpreter. I'll try to present you his case. Uh, so there is a resolution, uh, issued on June eleventh, twenty twenty. Do you have a copy of this resolution?
Uh, we do not have a copy of the resolution. So if you want us to gather any documents and then go on and speak at the next board meeting, then if there's documents you want us to review and have prepared for you to come out there, you of course, under the open meetings act, have three minutes to talk. But if there's documents that you want us to review beforehand, then let us know what they are and we'll take a look at them.
Yes, let's, let's, let me present you, so, uh, the, Vasile, the, the owner of the company, uh, just had an interview with a couple of trustees and the president understands. And he, he was promised that the soon meeting, he will get the license that he needs. And he's waiting for about eight months. Uh, I don't know, for one reason was not issued for so long. And, uh, today, uh, he got, uh, fined, I don't know, for not having the license that was not issued for so long. So this is our problem, that you will consider, thank you.
So, so, so what he was doing?
Listening, listening.
Oh, they, they, so, listen, from, from, being just from.
And they want the, they want this.
And he wants to, they wants to have the business here, this is the business that was, that was operating without license. So, so what they, what, they wanna make it right and they wanna get their license where they can open their business.
Ladies and gentlemen, for Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the public, um, we are gonna be back here in a special meeting on the twenty-eighth. And it seems as though, from a quick analysis of the issue, that there's two people looking for business licenses here. There was some bureaucratic issues that went on during the last administration. By all accounts, if, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, we'll send the building department over there just to check everything out. And then we'll revisit this issue on the July twenty-eighth special meeting in Chicago.
So, do, do you suggest that we should attend that meeting on, uh, July twenty-eighth?
I can't make that suggestion, but if it was my business up for business license approval, I would be here.
So, so do you want us to be present there, as the other gentlemen swear?
We have been doing every meeting because of the rising cases of COVID, because of the Delta variant. We have both been physical and online. You can either be physical or online.
So it can be physical, we can be present there, so what time will be on July twenty-eighth, please?
What time to, okay, six-thirty. Can you be here around at six-thirty?
Okay, thank you very much. So should we bring a copy of that resolution before, so you have handy to, to analyze?
I can't tell you what or what not to bring, but what I would do is I would be prepared to discuss any documents you want to present to the board.
We appreciate that, thank you very much, so, principal, uh, to meet on July twenty-eighth.
You'll be on the agenda for the twenty-eighth.
July twenty-eighth, yes, sir, you will be there.
We have a public hearing at six-thirty.
Public hearing at six-thirty, please, sir. So you can come between six-thirty and seven.
Okay, this is good, good for, for us. Appreciate a lot your, your consideration.
Is that okay if I bring the board?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Any more public comment?
Any more public comment?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Fine, you?
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of regarding the trees and the forests that are taking over property. Is there any way you can do anything about that? Like the backyard, they coming over into your backyard. It's, it's yucky out in your backyard.
What location?
Uh, on one hundred and forty-second Street. This is Keisha.
Okay, one hundred and forty-second, between, uh,
Wood, oh, where the, um, trailers are.
Okay, you're right between Undery and, uh, Lincoln Street on one hundred and forty-second. You're talking about the easement? Or you're talking about the abandoned house next door?
Uh, no, I'm talking about the backyard. The backyard is becoming a forest.
Okay.
Where the trees are growing over into the backyard.
Okay, so, what I would do, uh, what is your, I can't remember your z, address, but can, can, can you give me your address and then we can go off of?
Eighteen thirty-eight, one hundred and forty-second Street.
Okay. This is, this is.
And also the, the pothole, that they're, they're tearing up our dirt.
Okay, the potholes on one hundred and forty-second Street?
Um, actually, it's on Wood, it's a wood. Yeah, that's Wood, the pothole. When you turn it into one hundred and forty-second Street, you're, you're just, your front tires just go right into the ditch.
Okay, so, so what I do?
I mean, it's, it's patched, but it's, 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 it's becoming unpatched now.
I think, I think I know which hole you're talking about, because I ran into it also. What I do, I check with, with the county, but I will have public works to come over tomorrow and see if they can do it. We can get some, uh, more patching put there. But that's the road where the, uh, county actually ran some type of, uh, gas line. And they patched it, but it's, it went in, so now it's like, like a hole.
Yes.
It's not so much a hole, it's a patch, but it's sinked in when your car go in.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yep.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
You got it.
I will have that addressed tomorrow with public works, but at the same time, also with the county.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'm glad you, uh, called in.
You're welcome.
Is there any more public comment?
Take that as a no.
Mayor, if I don't record, we don't have any more public comments.
So, they said, uh,
I have nothing for close.
There's nothing for closed session? So they take us to?
There's one that may be.
What? For, um, for her, the two weeks?
She's the approval.
For her, for her, the two weeks.
The, or the, uh, superintendent's check for the two weeks that he came in? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Didn't you talk about it to the families?
Okay, uh, ladies and gentlemen, for, it is not on the agenda right now. So if you look, it says closed session. It does not say items to be considered after closed session. So we'll put it on for Wednesday.
Oh, okay. It'll be passed.
Passed on Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday or Tuesday?
The twenty-eighth, to the.
Yeah.
Can y'all, um, do I have to make a number, I do, can I just speak on? It's a patch of grass like growing like crazy over there, sp, sp, spotty and wood is on the railroad sign. And we get ready to come out into the intersection, can't really see passing, so they're all that.
It's like a truck.
Oh, it's like a growing bush. That's what?
Farm truck.
No, it's right.
No, she's talking about the fact, uh, big patches, uh.
It's making this off of its own.
Tree or something on the corner.
Yeah, it's on the corner, it's like, it's on its own little section.
Yes.
I mean, Mac, you want to keep up the works.
Okay, so what we do, yeah, we address it, I had it addressed.
Just say, cause I'm coming out to go, you know, car might hit my car, because I can't, can't even see that's the other. Out, to then you gotta go out into the intersection, with the grass and so far. And it's right by the railroad track, it's by the railroad.
By the railroad, western.
Cause I have it.
By the railroad, the western. You're by the railroad, western, the corner of, uh, western, it's falling.
Oh, that's western, I thought that was wood.
It's not, it's both ends.
Okay.
It's both ends, it's one on western and it's one on wood. Is it both, is it both ends or side?
So y'all in the hell just to let her?
On Wood Street? On Wood Street, there, there's a tall bush there, so you have to come out into the intersection. When you're coming off, yeah, when you're coming off the side, it's by, yeah, it's to the left. You know that road, that's not raggedy, kinda hunky. They try to fill it out here, but it's still kinda messed up. When you go straight out here, now it's falling, going.
It's hard.
It's Harvey, though, as.
I understand, but they need to do something about.
It's Harvey, uh, so, so we need to call Chris Clark on that.
Right, right. Um, we ain't down on western.
You know, western, that's, that's Dixon.
Right.
So what we do, we, we are getting in touch with, uh, Harvey Public Works and see if they allow us to go and cut that piece. If we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Because Dixon residents do drive through there. So, uh, before we adjourn, um, I would like for, uh, our file ears, others, have a word.
Thank you.
I'll be very quick. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board, uh, ma'am clerk. I apologize for my delay, I had a minute toward the I.S.B.S., but I'll be really quick. I've been working with, uh, during the selling, with a few items regarding the S.C.I.U. local seventy-three contract payout, uh, fire department. We're not close to present yet, but we are in discussion with them, but hopefully finalize that sooner than later. Uh, many discussions regarding the enhancement of the fire N.E.M.S. services for the communities, first talking to other communities and, and, uh, still working with Harvey, who's been doing a great job for us, as well as Bud's ambulance. And on July twelve, I was on the scene with the Harvey Fire Department Way to Brush Fire, uh, right across the street, one hundred and forty-six at Sealy. And as always, again, Harvey Fire Department's done a great job, they extinguished the fire while they were shooting, so, any questions for me?
I just want you to know that I did tell them that I called Chief Bill. And Chief Bill, um, we hadn't been told this, but they, um, our residents can call there and get smoke.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they've always done it.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, I kinda asked them, had to communicate with you.
Yeah.
But, um, so now our residents can call and they can get that. But whatever Harvey offers to Harvey residents, we are entitled to that. But I did tell them that.
Right.
And, uh, they, they can call.
Excellent.
If we were not told that.
Excellent, uh, and trustee Tyson, he was talking, I was talking with Chief Bell and he, uh, I think, uh, fortunately, must have been some miscommunication as far as the, uh, fire department was supposed to be there yesterday, but I don't think I tied up on a call or something, but I'll find out, cause I wasn't emailed with him, he said he'd be there, so something hit him.
Oh, man.
Other than, any other questions?
Oh, she did.
Oh, they did come.
I was in the inside getting.
Oh, okay, good, all right. Scratch that, Harvey's the guy, sorry, awesome. You scared me, come on, you can't believe it, so.
That's good. So, appreciate you being here, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I know you be busy running, but also, uh, if I can, I would like to thank the township, uh, Francis Guerelli for supervisor.
Yes.
For coming out on yesterday. Uh, we had a nice time with the township. They also had the COVID-nineteen shots. We had the Pfizer as well, that's Johnson and Johnson. And I must say, I'm gonna die with shot, sorry.
Oh, oh, you get.
Two, two, two. You know what I'm saying? We don't, feeling, feeling good, it'll be feeling better.
Are we coming out in June?
I would just, yes, they will be out again, uh, probably, I, I know I might have them out here on the August twenty-first, but I might have them out here beforehand. And if so, uh, what we do, we have flyers going around. And I would encourage everyone to please get a shot, please get your shot. Uh, if you don't get it, again, then it's on you, I'm not gonna make you get it. All I can say is pray over whatever you do and take care of your business. So if that's, but. Right, and also we had, uh, the mayor of Dalton here on yesterday and her crew, and I, I appreciate that. We also had the, uh, fire department here, I thank them. And I just like to always keep a prayer on my tongue for everyone. I pray that everyone get on safe tonight. And always trust in God. So with that said, I'm looking for a motion.
I'm making motion, trustee.
Done, I'm gonna start preaching. Go my way.
Trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Sniff?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McCallum?
Yes.
And the time is, uh, we're gonna have.